Okay, I'm going to call tonight's meeting in order for the Finance Committee. Notice is hereby given that the Finance Committee of Alliance City Council will hold a public meeting at the following time and place, Monday, April 21st, 2025, 5:45 PM, at the Alliance Municipal Courthouse. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss ordinance 1825 and any other business that may properly come before the Finance Committee. Okay, um, last council, uh, due to a lack of, um, of, of attendance to waive referral to Finance Committee, uh, procedurally, it needs to be addressed here in Finance, that's why we're here tonight. Uh, the information that we're going over was presented to council in the fall of, uh, 2024 by Nikki, um, McAvain of Habitat, and also, uh, employed by the, um, Parks Department. So, um, we just want to go over the expenditures, and if there's any questions, any debate, obviously have that, other than that, I ask for an action to defer back to council or not. So, the handout, uh, that I gave, uh, is going over on the first page, is, um, the disbursement of the $180,000, which is what is specifically, oh, I'm sorry, let me go back to the, um, the, uh, announcement for the meeting, there was a typo, uh, there was ordinance, uh, 1625 incorrect, it was ordinance 1825. So, I'm referring to ordinance 1825, um, and, uh, looking for approval for the $180,000. That is on the first page, administration fee of $3,600, um, splash pad at Maple Beach, $5,000, and then all the work that's being done at, uh, Silver Park for $171,400. Uh, those funds will be allocated for purchase of a iceless skating rink, skates for rent, small storage facility, paving of the valley entertainment area, additional expenses associated with skating rink entertainment area, including but not limited to safety, equipment, sound, lighting, and ground. Is there any discussion or questions? City Safety Service Director, Mr. Greger?
Just would like to point out to you all that in essence, it's not really an expenditure, um, because of the way this grant works, it's reimbursement, so what you are doing is appropriating the money that would go to these projects as soon as they're done, the money would be paid back from ODNR, and we just put right back where this came from.
Can you repeat that and say it louder?
Yeah. I can definitely repeat it, I would try to say it louder. So, this is, it is an appropriation, but it is for the purpose of reimbursement. There's an ODNR grant that will fund these projects, it will pay for the projects, I, I'm not going to say entirely, because actually, the Parks Superintendent and Parks Board has done a wonderful job of raising money in addition to what this grant brings, um, but it won't require city funds other than to pay the bills, so that they can be submitted for reimbursement, then we get all of our money back.
Thank you, sir, and eliminate all the phone calls, and that's the explanation that they all get, as you come to council.
Any further questions, discussions? Okay. Um, auditors?
Sorry, I just, I'm listening to Nikki getting prepared this today, and I hope it's a form, because she was here, as you said, earlier last year, to give everybody a idea about what this involves, and she's actually got a line item of $180,000 on one page, that fits to, uh, the, so we can, so we're looking for reimbursement, the other side has some of the other things that are being done throughout the park system, so these are all good things, as, as, as Dr. Lones said, basically, because we had to send it here, and we don't want to delay this, and these are the projects that the city would have started, and given the, uh, it's going to be a super big game, so this is important.
Any other statements, discussions?
I, I would just like to reiterate what, um, Mike said, and there's been a lot of work put into this, and this is going to be really, really great stuff for the City of Alliance, so job well done.
Yeah, major renovations to the, to the parks for sure, Maple Beach and Silver. Okay, um, if there isn't any further discussion, I'll ask for a motion to be made.
Motion to?
Refer back to council.
Okay, motion, I'll make a motion to refer back to council?
I'll second that motion, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, none, uh, motion is passed, we will refer ordinance 1825 back to council for a vote. Is there any other issue to discuss at Finance Committee tonight?
Um, the only question I was going to have, were you wanting to have a meeting just to look at, um, the EMS contract?
I think the last thing that we talked about was doing a joint.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, we can get in touch and find a date and do something like that.
Yep, perfect, okay.
Okay.
That's all I needed.
Okay, well, go ahead and ask for a motion to, uh, oh, what are we going to do with that?
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.
Great meeting, great meeting.
Great meeting, thank you.
I'm calling this, meeting of the Alliance City Council in order, please stand for the invocation by Councilwoman Cherry, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
It speaks out your heads, Father God, I come here today, it has been a ruling four months for me, and I thank you for giving me upright and coming back to council, to all my colleagues, the city, and our constituents. We want to ask God for his blessings, just at Easter Sunday, for our blessings, to be thankful and come back together and do his will at all costs, because we don't know the hour of the day that one of us may not be here, but to all, to be grateful, to be humble, and to do God's will, and I ask out of all of us, as you say.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Ms. Gurney, will you call the roll?
Baguera.
Here.
Cherry.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
Kiko.
Here.
King.
Here.
Lones.
Here.
Mastriani.
Okay, Mr. Mastriani asked to be excused, he's on family business right now, so I accept the motion, approved by Ms. Edwards, is there a second? Second, Dr. Lones, for the discussion, call the roll, please.
Baguera.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Edwards.
Yes.
Kiko.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Lones.
Yes.
All right, moving on, you have electronically received the minutes of the last council meeting on April 7th, are there any additions or corrections to those minutes as they were set? Seeing none, they will be filed as they were sent. Communications, Ms. Gurney?
I have the items listed on the agenda with no additions.
Questions? All right, motion to file as presented is in order, moved by Ms. Cherry, second, second by Mr. Baguera, through the discussion, questions? Ms. Gurney?
Baguera.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Edwards.
Yes.
Kiko.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Lones.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Barnes, you're welcome. The City Council and citizens of Alliance, glad you're here this evening. Uh, my first item, the following report on the water sewer, cemetery building, and engineering departments, the receipts collected through the mayor's office during the months of February and March, February, $870,213.69, and in March, $984,269.30. My second item, Randall Flint, our city health commissioner is retiring June 30th this year, and after 44 years of, of public service. Interviews have taken place, and Mr. Randy Wiskowski has been hired, he's a, uh, Alliance native, he has 25 years' experience of healthcare, uh, service with the Stark County Health Department, he's a graduate of Kent State University with a master of public health degree, he's held, uh, six different managerial positions for the, for over 20 years, uh, for the Stark County Health Department, he's registered with environmental health specialist as a food safety, solid waste, water degree, policy development, regulatory enforcement, and mosquito control. Mr. Wiskowski will begin, uh, June 3rd, at his, at his new position. Uh, on ordinance 1525 on comments and recommendations, I have, you've had, you have an issued copy of, uh, of my review, and, uh, one recommendation on that, and, as I say, it's, it's recommendations, all that really any of us can do is make recommendations and, uh, make our comments known, uh, the City Council, you make the decisions here, and that's, that's as it should be. And, uh, under, uh, the last 14 months, everyone really has had the opportunity to contribute and be heard. The APO's message has been very clear, and demanded that there be no consideration of mandatory interior, uh, inspections and rental registration fees, that's been very clear. And Dr. Lones and, uh, Philip, uh, Mastriani, uh, combined along with Jimmy Edwards, have submitted under ordinance 1525 amendments for chapter 771, and they're, they're very good, uh, amendments, and I, I support their, their effort and, and what they've done. Uh, so, they'll, they'll serve chapter 771 going forward, but the amendments could have been done 14 months ago, because on those, there's no mandatory rental registration, there's no mandatory inspection, uh, clauses whatsoever, but again, I, I support and I say those, those are very good, but, uh, without, uh, an inspection code enforcement and rental registration on a proactive basis, city landlord legislation could basically act exactly where it was 24, for the last 27 years, except for the, the new items that are on, but again, no enforcement, no accountability, and on a reactive basis, until after calls made. Uh, good examples, I had, I had a, uh, gentleman, uh, call me and say, Andy, I've had a house on my street, and this is a, uh, pretty dominant, uh, area of town, 300,000, 400, 500,000 homes, uh, price range homes, it's been sitting, uh, vacant for three years now, the windows are getting busted in the second floor and up in the attic, uh, we see different, uh, animals coming and going, uh, throughout on the porches and, and feces and different things, in the driveway, there's three phone books, each year we get phone books thrown in our driveway, well, that's, that's, they're still laying there, and so right away, I checked with our administration zoning and said, what, what do we have here, has this ever been brought to your attention, or have you gone out in any, any form of proactive check on this, and it isn't, and, and it won't be, and, and that's, that's the reason exactly why, if there's no enforcement on a proactive basis, you're going to have, uh, issues like this that happen, and so that's just a good example, and it doesn't matter what neighborhood, uh, that, uh, this happens, so, uh, the, and the bigger, the other half of the whole situation, this epidemic blight situation that, that we've had in our city for way too many years, with abandoned properties, illegal dumping, decreased property value, quality of life for the, uh, citizens of Alliance, and also creating hotspots for criminal activity have taken place, but the, the point is here now, where we're at on this, is that light's just not in the first and second ward, I know, I grew up in the first ward, so I know it isn't just there, you pick any street in town, you go north, south, east, west, from Patterson, Ely Street up to the, uh, Silver Park, and you'll find hundreds, hundreds of homes that are in disrepair and in need, and if we had a good, uh, proactive, uh, registration, mandatory registration in place, would certainly, uh, adhere to this problem, and the, uh, and really, having a, a good plan in place is really the first lines of defense in preventing neighborhoods from slipping in, into despair, and, uh, along with that, having a good, vigilant, uh, trained, well-trained team of inspectors, uh, high-level follow-through on, uh, code violations on a daily basis, not after you get a call. Randy Flint, you've all had a copy of his letter, it's a very good letter, and I quote him, "I compare this proposed program initiative to our food service operation licensing program. Our department licenses and inspects them all, and holds all of them to the same standards to ensure community safety." Can you imagine our public safety issues that we'd have if had not this mandatory license and inspection policy was not in place? I look at the, uh, mandatory rental registration inspection code enforcement as exactly the same thing, it is, it's public safety of all, all levels, and during this whole time, while the city is going through continual decaying and will continue to, under present policies, uh, you, you look at the, the facts that also, uh, takes place on internal, uh, operations, is in 2024, and you go back 10, 15, 20 years, zero inspection fees of income have come into the city, zero code violation fines have come into the city, except for last year, last year was $500, uh, with it, but with this, no operating revenues can pay the costs associated with enforcing, uh, the, uh, inspection process on a proactive basis, same as all other, uh, cities in Stark County, Canton is 210 per unit per year, North Canton, 100 to 200 per unit per year, Massillon, 100 per unit, Louisville, 50, and Barberton just raised theirs to 200, so, uh, enforcement and inspection on a proactive basis is so important, it's necessary, uh, this blight consider, uh, issue that continues to happen with our city is, is, is beyond belief, and again, just drive around out of head, many people during this last year have come to me and say, Andy, something's got to be done, our city's decaying and falling apart, again, not just in wards 1 and 2, but all throughout our, our city, so, uh, another, uh, fact that I received was, uh, in 2024, we had 360 code violations, 125 of them were rentals only, and, but, uh, with that, only 10 cases were brought in front of the judge, 350 cases remain open per year, because why? There's no one who's going to fall through on, there's nobody there on a proactive, it's all reactive basis, there's no mandatory, there's no proactive plan, can we really say this is all okay, that we have going for us? Again, I, I, I support and, and, uh, Dr. Lones and Philip Mastriani, and, and Jimmy's efforts in, in what they're doing, and it's the right thing, and it's certainly the good steps to get to it, but it's not done yet, and I recommend Katie Look, the Wire, our law director, to put mandatory amendment language, put a plan together, put an ordinance together for 771, along with, uh, Dr. Lones and Jimmy and, and Philip's amendments, and, uh, with the, the information I passed out was a copy from, from North Canton, but, uh, and Katie, in our conversation we've had, she says she has an attorney staff who specializes in landlord legislation, let's, let's have some action there, let's, let's get to it, let's, let's find out what we can do, uh, and find out, and we know through all this process, that all the other cities in Stark County, they've got their, they've got their plans in place, it's working well, let's, we have to, uh, do the same thing for our city, they deserve, we don't deserve to have what we have, and when you drive through town, just the blight is one thing, go with Randy Flint on some of his inspections that he goes to, you'll be shocked, you'll be shocked to find out how people live, and they shouldn't be doing that, it's our responsibility, it's all of us, it's all of you as council, and certainly anything we can do with administration to support and, and do the right thing, uh, you can, you can count on it. Uh, Mr. President, that is my report, thank you for my time, and let me say my piece, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Any questions for Mayor?
So, the, the ordinance that's been on books since 1998, said we're supposed to be collecting $45 per inspection, why haven't we been, I mean, that's the administration, that's not council, why has your administration not been collecting this money for these inspections?
Because it's just, they don't have the manpower to fall through on, one week when they get it, and it's done, from, from administration, then it goes to enforcement, administration follows through, enforcement first, so, I said only 10 went in front of, uh, last year, out of the 360, went to enforcement.
How many of those 360 did you say were rentals? 120, I think you said?
Uh, yeah, 120.
So, even if we do this mandatory rental registration that you're asking for, that doesn't solve the problem with the homeowners, the majority of those were homeowners, right?
Well, it's, but it's mandatory, the thing is, you're getting the funds out in front, you're not waiting till you get a call.
But what I'm saying is, those, the majority of those that you read off were homeowner, not, not rental, so, what are we doing on that side then, are we only going to be proactive towards it?
It's up to you, that's been talked about.
But that's what, what Dr. Lones proposed is inspections on all the CDs and F, not just the rental properties, so, that, that to me helps solve that problem.
Well, you know the CDs and Fs are demos, or demos.
Not necessarily.
I just, uh, his ordinance addresses all, all the, the properties that have issues, not just one section of them, and if we want to be proactive, I think we got to go after all of them, not just, just a portion of it, that's not being proactive.
You've got to have enforcement in order to collect it, and enforcement.
I, I can't believe we haven't had enforcement for 27, haven't had enough people for 27 years doing enforcement.
Zero income.
But it's on the books, that's, I, I agree, but I, why? Why have you not collected for inspection? That, that would be my question, we haven't, we haven't collected for inspections when it's been on the books that we're supposed to. Hi, does anybody have an answer?
Oh, you, you have, that was the only piece on there are for interior inspections.
Did it start sliding through your mind?
Right, that's, that's what the fees are for, and basically, that is one of the good things that's happening here, is you're a doc, you're fixing that standard that forces an interior inspection from a, from a dollar estimate of what, uh, is necessary to a grading system, which I think will be helpful.
Okay, Ms. Cherry has a question?
I'm piggybacking on what Chris said, we're talking about proactive, we're talking 54 years ago, I was not on council, but I cleaned up the neighborhoods because of different houses, the high weeds and whatever came about, my dad started it, my husband started it, and I even got out there, and we, we whacked and we cleaned up, but when you say proact, I can call up to code enforcement then and now, and there still has not been enough done just for interior, because if you start with the interior, you give them a little bit of pride, put pressure on for the interior, over 40 years, we wouldn't be at this point, I don't think, with interior and exterior, and nobody to, uh, actually enforce what has happened, it was with Tony Middleton, it was with John Blazer, I can take it all the way back to when I started on council, and when I was with the auditor's office, no one never stepped up to, to the plate to actually active, working on 771, it's on the books, it's been on the books for 54 years, and the administration never, never done their part to make things better in this town, and especially in wards 1 and 2, now, it's like a cancer, 1 and 2's been that way 40, 50 years, now, it's, it's coming into the third ward, it's, it's going to come all over the whole town, so what I'm saying is, this could have been eliminated if the administration would have stepped up and done their part at the beginning, you can't throw it back over here on the council, before I left, 18 months of meetings on top of meetings and fees on top of fees, that's not the answer, I don't think, at this point, the point is, is enforcement and actually listen to people, and make sure, make real sure, when we do this ordinance, because our names is going on at their ordinance, do y'all understand what I'm saying? And I want to make real sure that everything is up to par and kosher, because I don't want nobody coming back on, not one of us, about something that the administration should have done 54 years ago, so be clear and read and be cautious of what you're doing. There's too many good people out here, landlords and whatever, they're trying to do the best they can with the properties, and just like I was reading, I had four months to read about, you have to go call up and, uh, you're going to, $100 if you don't get it, somebody to come out and do or fix up, you got 10 days to get, you can't get a contractor in 10 days, and who got deep pockets all the time? Those are the things I want y'all to be conscious of, when we set rules, you have to look at it, that is for everybody, that's all I got to say, we got to be fair across the board, you can't find contractors, we don't have deep pockets, we pull, we live from pillar to post, payday to payday, and yes, we like to have a nice home, we do the best we can, but we got to have enforcement to work with us, you got hammer and nails.
Other questions?
I think, I think one thing we're losing too, I, I, I can't say that the administration didn't do their job, what I just heard was, there's 350 code violations sitting there, but how, those, the administration had to get those code violations there, but the enforcement part, there's something going on that those 350 violations haven't looked at.
All right, yes, hold on.
That's my opinion, so.
I can address that, um, 350 code violations have not come through my office, at all, not even close, um, I think, if I look at an email that I just got earlier today, I can tell you how many came through my office, and that was, and this comes from the city, z, uh, 10 complaints from 2024 is what I received, um, eight complaints in 2023, five in 2022, zero in 2021, um, so, 771 allows the city currently, with nothing else, to charge that inspection fee if our inspectors determine the, it's currently 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, if the city inspectors determine that a property, whether homeowner or renter, is a 3, 4, or 5, can charge that inspection fee currently, we've just not done it, that doesn't have anything to do with my office whatsoever, that, I don't charge that, so that can be done when they issue their violation letters, hey, you have XYZ violation, that fits you into this area of 771, requiring this, not only for you to fix it, but now we're, you know, charging you this inspection fee, we can do that now, I don't know why it hasn't been done since it's passed, but just to clear that up, as far as the 306, I'm not sure where that number came from, I asked our clerk of courts for the actual numbers, and those were the numbers she provided to me, so, I think that there's a disconnect on what 771 means and what we can do with it.
No, walk me through it, okay, say a inspector, he goes and has a, he has violations, so they have so many times to get that cleaned up or whatever, and they don't do it, okay, but that comes to your office then, right?
It used to, yes, um, we.
But why doesn't it now then?
Well, if you remember, in December, I think it was, we changed the penalties of our property maintenance code.
Yeah.
So, it turned that into a civil fine process now, so if they don't fix it, the city can levy a civil fine on the property owners, and there's a process for that, there's still the option that the city has to submit that for prosecution through the criminal courts, but, um, I, part of what, uh, uh, the mayor said was, in essence, true out of those cases that I just read off from Ms. Carper's email, I think we did get like $500 or something, but, you know, I, I think I addressed this earlier, is when the judge gives a fine, you know, you give $250 fine because you didn't comply with property maintenance, it is his general practice to give a really big credit off of that fine when it's fixed, so that's why we switched kind of to the civil penalties.
But that, that is, we were talking about 24, that didn't start till the end before the court.
No, that's how it's always been.
But then, in other words, somehow that has to, you're saying only 10 got to the judge, is that what you're saying?
Only 10 came to my office.
But, but I can't believe more didn't, how, I mean, what about all the other stuff?
They're sitting on somebody's desk.
What are you saying, your office, what does that mean?
Like, I get, so, and I explained this before too, and I provided a little spreadsheet, um, to council about, here are the cases that came to my office, here was their initial violation letter, their second violation letter, and here was the citation hearing, the citation hearing was kind of your last chance to fix it before charges would be filed, and so, Ms., and I provided that, and, and my numbers match up with Ms. Carper's numbers that she gave me, where the rest of them are, I don't know, but that's what I see, so, what 771 would allow, right now, currently, is for the administration to look at what the code says, the, this will put you into a 3, 4, 5, and follow the procedure for 771, we just have never done it, so, what this amendment to 15, the 1525, the amendment to 771, is more of a modernization of what we already had, um, and it does require those report backs to council, so we don't have these questions, right, like, where are those 300 and some, I don't know, but the 771, if implemented, would require those, all of the inspections done, and the results of those to be reported to council and the public, so we would know.
So, in other, in other words, you don't, I, I still don't quite understand it, because So in other, in other words, you don't, I, I still don't quite understand it, because if they write all these citations up, and then they don't meet those citations, don't they have to turn those into your office?
That's what I'm saying. I don't know where the rest of these are. I have the numbers that I have, that I was given, so I don't know if that means that people fix them up. In the meantime, I don't know.
Where did the mayor pull this?
This discussion, I'm sure, is going to continue in a few minutes, so let's move on. Any further questions directed to the mayor?
Yeah, I have one. Where did you get your numbers? Can you provide council with the data that you've got, the 306, 120?
Mary Ann.
I'm sorry?
The clerk?
Yeah, the clerk, clerk of courts.
How are those numbers so different?
I, I just have the numbers she had, that's all I can use.
Well, that's funny.
Further questions? There's still a lot more to do, isn't there?
Well, it is a lot to do.
Okay, well, let's keep moving on here then. We're gonna go to the Safety Service Director for his report, Mr. Dregger.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of council. Quick item that I wanted to make you aware of. I know in the water sewer boards, we're gonna talk about the garbage rates for next year. I'll be setting those based on the contract.
Not in the water sewer. At the, at the utilities committee, which is.
Embedded into that, yes, yes, because it's the same group. But that's coming on the very, we went out to bid so long ago, you may have forgotten that. We went out to bid last fall for that contract. Kimball, I reported back, they were the lowest and best bidder. We had, we had four companies took out specs, two did bid. But one item was kind of dissatisfying, so we continued to negotiate on that with Kimball. We have, what is their best offer? I might, wanted you to be aware of that, because it's an improvement from the bid. It deals with the, big change to this, and we'll talk about it again once more in the meeting. Big change in the way that the garbage companies look at service. Disposal is less than the cost, the actual services are a bigger portion of the cost than in previous contracts. That affected the senior bag program. That's the program where if you're over 65, you can only have a service that allows you to then buy a bag and set just a very limited amount out. The prices that we had from Kimball, this is just for the bag, that we would buy, that then we have to figure in the, the cost of the disposal and the selling, went up to $1.50 with the proposal there. What that meant is that if you bought the basic service and had one bag, it was gonna cost you $10.38 a month. And that's one bag a month, which I don't think is a likely thing that ever happened, that you'd only, that you'd keep a bag of garbage for an entire month. So we went back and looked at adjusting that, and with what we have negotiated, it will cost you $10.58 a month for that same one bag and the subscription service, which is actually 20 cents higher. But the bag price drops down to 64 cents. Let me make sure I'm reading that right. So what it does mean is that when you have what's more likely, I think in a program where you're putting out a bag a week, you go from that $10.38 to $14.88 under their, what they bid to us. With what we've negotiated, you would go from the $10.58 to 12, sorry, to 12.50. So it's about a $2.50 a month saving for what I think is the likely way that most people would use in every, putting out a bag a week. So I wanted to make you aware that that's going to be negotiated amendment to the bid, and I have legal counsel for bill, that I make you aware of that. So I wanted to do that ahead of our meeting, so. First item. Second item is just again on ordinances 17 and 1825. Since we do have enough to suspend rules, we might be asking for that tonight. Those are the two park ordinances. One, obviously, we had the finance committee meeting on the appropriation for the reimbursement amounts. The second ordinance is to allow the agreement to be executed. We need both of those in order to move forward. I know the parks department is ready to go, and so hopefully tonight we could spend, suspend the rules on those. And if you have questions about what those, what's going with that, it was in the finance committee meeting earlier. Big change to that is most of it's gonna be directed to Silver Park, and again, and I just want to give kudos to the park board, because they have, they have raised the funds generally, absent $5,000, I think is what we're showing here. The rest of that has all been raised through donations for the splash park at Maple Beach, which is nice, because that's gonna allow, and even better product, I think, at Silver Park when they get them, they're gonna be able to do some more things than they expected. And the final thing, is also park related, and I am sorry, Ms. Cherry, that when you're back, I go into the things you already knew about, so my report is boring to you tonight, because you've been working on all of these things all this period, but. Memorial Park, there is a plan, and I see Mr. Zufall sitting out here for, if you remember, Vietnam's memorial was put in that park about three years ago. Not too many people know why Memorial Park is called Memorial Park, but it is because it was came to us through the VA, and that should have probably always been a priority to do that, it honors veterans. In addition to the Vietnam Veterans Memorial that is there now, there will be one for World War II, World War II, or III, the Korean Conflict, and also for the War on Terrorism. They are coming. The site was prepped today, the concrete is down where they will sit, the grass has been back, so you can kind of get an idea of where it's at, and then hopefully, and probably Mr. Zufall's fingers are crossed better than I's, we will be able to see the monuments there by Memorial Day, but they are coming very soon. So again, if you're out that way, you can, I think, if you're at McDonald's anyway, as you're coming out, you'll get a chance to kind of see what it's gonna look like. So just wanted to make you aware of that. And that's my report, sir.
Questions for Mr. Dregger. Okay?
Mr. Dregger?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there, I'll put, put golf course out there? Some kind of golf course at Memorial?
Frisbee golf course.
Frisbee golf?
Yeah, so it takes up the whole park, and if you, as you're walking through the park, you will see kind of like a silver pole that has a little basket around it. And yeah, that's where you have, I, I don't know much about it, so I'm not gonna scrap a bit.
They've been here forever, I just, I didn't know if that's what those were, but there's a new sign out there.
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions? All right, moving on, the law director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just be brief. I wanted to bring up, there was a recent change in law regarding driving under suspension and how your license gets suspension, or suspended. It's one of the most common things I see through the criminal court, and everybody probably can relate, dealing with the BMV sometimes is like a spiral of death for people, and it, it just becomes very difficult. So Ohio has made it a little bit easier, they've taken away some of the things that can get your license suspended. So if you guys know anybody who struggles with this, our court here has a phenomenal system. The mayor's wife, we call her Ms. Sue, through here, would be happy to help anybody on that path to get their license back. And it's even easier now that Ohio has changed their laws. So if you know anybody who thought they were in that position, that they just never could dig out, now would be the time, and our court does have a service through Sue Rove and her helper, I think Suzie is her name, so Sue and Suzie, to help you on that path. So if that's anything that could help anybody, just know that there was a recent change, and our court does help. So that's all I have, Mr. President.
Questions for the law director.
I commend Sue for her efforts in what they're trying to do. I also want to get with you, Captain X, and.
Chief.
Chief, excuse me. We will not forgive me. 10 more months? But I need to get with all of you guys, because we need to, I want to do an expungement clinic.
Absolutely.
We have to have that, because a social security card, driver's license, state ID, this will get people back to trying to get a job and to work. You have these agencies that get funding through the city, and they're not utilizing it to help people. We need to help them. So I want to run some expungement clinics.
Sounds great.
Other questions for this one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have one legal question for the law director, and I'm referring back to the mayor's report. It appears to me that the mayor believes the administration doesn't have the legal authority to enforce and perform inspections on property proactively. Is there anything preventing the mayor and his administration from inspecting properties right now, under the codified ordinance of 771?
No.
Also, does 771 make it mandatory to register rental property?
Yes, it, it is mandatory, and it's mandatory under state law as well, that it be registered through a county auditor.
Okay, thank you. And just to reiterate, 771 has been in effect for 27 years, is that correct?
I think so. 1998, is that?
1998, okay.
27 plus years.
27 plus, okay. All right, thank you. I have no further questions.
Any other questions? Moving on, no, we're out of here.
Mr. President, I just wanted to welcome back Ms. Cherry, and I hope you are back to full strength. We, well, no, we're close enough to make it here at least, so it's good to see you again.
Thank you.
I also want to recognize the City of Alliance for receiving the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. It's technically says to the City of Alliance, but it's definitely something that we like to give credit to our employees of the auditor's office because of all the work that they do. This is really one of the highest forms of achievement and recognition for our type of office, for our comprehensive annual financial report. This one is dated for the end of 2023, that's how long it takes for them kind of to go through these and grade those. We're actually almost done with the 2024 audit. They're gonna come in next week and do some things in person, which they generally do most things remotely these days, but I want to congratulate my staff. We've had a lot of turnover over the years, just due to retirement. I've had three out of my four people leave in the last 85 years that had a lot of experience, so we lost a lot of experience out the door, and when you try to replace people like that, it's very difficult. These things become more difficult every year to try to win, so we will definitely want to recognize their efforts. And that's all I had for tonight.
Questions for the auditors. We have none. All right. Move on to our standing committee report. Reasonology, Mr. Brigara.
Thank you, Mr. President. No formal report, but congratulations to Kevin and his office. That's a, a nice accomplishment. And then Mike, do you want the salt ordinance passed tonight?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Moving on. Glad to have you back, Mr. Cherry.
President of council, I am glad to be back. It's been a long four months. Won't go into detail, it's just been a long four months, and it's good to be seen. And I want to commend Kevin and the staff, because I know what you do over there, been there, done that, and don't nobody understand, they only see reports coming out, shooting out, and handed out. It's a lot of work. And I commend you, Kevin, for all the work that you do and the staff. Kudos. And I hope to get back into the swing of things as quick as possible, but I'm going real slow. I've done a lot of reading in four months, and we need to be clear on the things that we look at. That's all, sir.
Thank you. All right, moving on then, utility, Mr. Edwards.
No formal report tonight, Mr. President, but I do want to say the Water Sewer Advisory Board has their quarterly meeting 8:00 AM this Wednesday, April, I should say next Wednesday, April 30th, in the conference room here, and then we're gonna interrupt at 8:30 for the utilities committee to look at the garbage contract, because it's the same council people on that also. So that's, that will be at 8:30 Wednesday, April 30th, in the conference room also. And congrats, Kevin, and your group.
All right, moving on, safety and judiciary, it's Kiko.
No formal report, I just want to advise council that I will be working with Dr. Lones to do a combined safety and judiciary meeting with finance committee to discuss the EMT contract. And I would also like to commend Kevin and his staff. Thank you for all the hard work that you do. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Keep it going, Ms. King.
No formal report tonight, sir.
All right, finance, Dr. Lones?
Thank you, Mr. President. As previously stated by the law director, we're looking for action tonight on 17 and 18. We did have a finance committee meeting to discuss the reimbursement grant. It was referred back to council for tonight, for some action and discussion. Also, I'm asking for support, passage of ordinance 1525 tonight. And also, I would like to submit my report to council that I presented on February, I believe it was the 18th, when ordinance 1525 was introduced. In the, in the notes, there was a quick summary of it, and I just wanted to have the complete record in, so if I can give that to the clerk and pass out copies to members, would like to do so. A few over there. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Let me go and have this matter, because I really am very pleased to be here. All right, moving on to public speech. At that time in our meeting, where anyone who reached to speak during this time had to sign up at the meeting, was in the meeting. And those signed up will be allowed to speak for three minutes, all right? You'll notice when I raise my hand, you have about 30 seconds to summarize, because the three minutes will be up. There will be no debate between speakers and the members of council, no profane language, no obscene insulting language, no disrespect or disruptive speech shall be permitted. And with that, please come to the podium and state your name and address and your topic, and the first is Brandy Gilt. Tocque.
Brandy Gilt, 2115 South Seneca. I wasn't gonna say anything about this rental landlord thing tonight, but good Lord, please get it settled. These people have become straight up disrespectful to each other, and what it's doing to our community is gross. It's uncomfortable. So please, take some action, do something, make a decision. Beyond that, we are still having our police appreciation barbecue on May 14. I do still invite y'all to join us. And I look forward to working with Jennifer and Dr. Lones on the EMT situation. I looked at the ordinance and I looked at the contract, and we don't actually have to unwind from that contract, because all it says is that they'll be our only provider. They don't say, it actually says, we expect the fire department to still do some transporting. So I guess the fiscally responsible thing at that point would be to start with billing for the transporting that we're already doing. We don't have to make big drastic moves. If we're already transporting, we already have a relationship with Ohio billing, why aren't we just billing? I read that we started the process, we paid $595 application fee to get a Medicare provider number that is now no good due to inactivity. So I just, this is a little tiny step that we can take to protect our citizens. What these, the EMT charges, people can't afford that. It's not, they're already paying a high income tax rate for our local community, so they deserve better service than what they're getting. That's all I have for tonight.
Logan Keller?
Logan Keller, 2233 Ridgewood Avenue. Just want to say thank you for everybody coming out so continually supporting the City of Alliance, and thank you, Ms. Cherry, for returning. It was a pleasure to see you back in your seat, ma'am. Also, I wanted to talk about Alliance Fire Department's ability to transport, not to piggyback too much off of what Brandy said, but it is something that I actually met with the Minerva Fire Department and their executive board and spoke, and got a little bit more supporting numbers. They have a smaller run call volume, but they also do profit about $350,000 based off of their program alone, and they also have resident tax credits that they, you know, don't actually bill residents, and they just soft bill their insurance. I know that somebody will know that, but it's also to me that I wanted to just point out a gross there. In the last year, we've given out $817,000 to Habitat for Humanity, and now tonight you're gonna talk about giving another $180,000 to a splash pad and ice skating rink, which predominantly Alliance doesn't have a big history of hockey in this town, because like, we don't have a professional team or anywhere near us within an hour and a half. That's just kind of something interesting there. But you're not willing to take the $130,000 first year cost differential, then the year after that, it, you know, pays for itself? We should think better of our community and actually support Alliance Fire Department. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jessica Zledi, and I live at 2520 Bellflower Drive. I'm speaking tonight to make a plea for city council to act in the best interest of citizens in our community and pass strong rental policies with interior inspections. I ask you to put away your personal and political agendas and act in the best interests of all citizens in our community. I think we can agree that there are big issues in town with access to state housing. To the landlords here tonight who take care of their tenants and their properties, thank you. You do what's right, not because of strict regulations. I think we can agree that there are big issues in town with access to safe housing. To the landlords here tonight who take care of their tenants and their properties, thank you. You do what's right, not because of strict regulations, but because you care. But we also need to acknowledge that the current policies are not working. There have been too many families in our community who are suffering because they have no choice but to accept unsafe living conditions. Too many renters are forced to live in homes where basic safety standards aren't met, and too many of our neighbors are uncertain about the place they lay their heads at night. This is not a problem, it's a crisis, and the time to act is now. When we talk about safe housing, we're talking about more than just walls and a roof. We're talking about the safety of children, the health of families, and the peace of mind that comes with knowing your space you call home will not endanger you or your loved ones. Strong rental policies, policies that include interior inspections, are the way to ensure that every home in our community meets basic safety standards. We all want what's best for our city, but we cannot achieve that without ensuring safe, quality housing is available to every single person, regardless of their income or background. We have the ability to make a difference. We have the power to raise the standard for all, to ensure that safe housing is a right and not a privilege, to enact stronger rental policies that will improve oversight, protect tenants, and keep everyone in our community safe. Let, help be the leaders who choose compassion over convenience, who choose welfare of all of our citizens over the comfort of the field. Let's pass these policies with a future in mind, a future where safe housing is the standard and no one is left behind.
Lauren Mendoza, would I do that, thank you, sir?
Lauren, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, sir.
All right, Lauren Mendoza.
Thank you. Lauren Mendoza, 71 Vincent Boulevard. Sorry. Last month, I visited a house on Cambridge and Haynes. If you live in Ward Two, that intersection might be familiar to you. I met a woman, let's say, well, name her Krista. She began renting a unit in this house in December. She moved out in March despite the threat of penalties and fees, for good reason. One that I would hope anyone with children would do in such a difficult circumstance. Circumstance, I need water. Uh, within weeks of moving in, her children both became really sick. Both had to be hospitalized and taken to multiple offices. Recently, her daughter required surgery as a direct result of the living conditions, and the results were not good. Experts told her it was most likely due to exposure to mold and sewage particulate in the air. So let me describe what I walked through when I visited this place. First, the attic. Windows to the outside, no glass panes, open to the elements. Bat water, water leads crap. Lining the walls around the entire perimeter of the attic. Bird and mouse corpses every other meter, left and thereby cats, I presume, among other droppings. Mold on several wall panels and on the ceiling above some rooms, and noted that at least one air duct was not fully aligned over the vent leading to the room below. So the particulate from all this matter definitely makes its way down. I wonder if that was Nora Krista and her dog's unit. Next, the basement. Found sewage from a leak that had pulled around one of the heaters. More mold throughout the expanse of the basement, loose wires dangling from the ceiling, some other fire hazards I noted. Both the attic and basement are common areas. Nora, Nora's doing all she can. Her children are thankfully improving, but they're in a very precarious situation, living between places. She's hoping that her daughter can rest and recuperates, so some small measure of stability can be had once more. The city has failed this person and her children. It's failing the people who are still living in that house. It's failing families all over the city, not just in Ward Two. Some families move away from Alliance altogether, but well, the rental units will be filled soon. We're learning today that the administration tends to do 300-plus mandatory inspections on common areas of tri-unit and up buildings given the fire code. And this could have helped her and her child's personal room. This is welcomed, to be sure, but more is needed. I would say to members of the city government, go to these houses. Go to these houses along with the inspectors, and please wear a mask when you do. We are better than this. I don't want this to be the reality for a single child or parent in Alliance. And that house, by the way, it was graded an A on Western Reserve Exterior Survey. It's upstairs balcony floor. It's not safe to step out on, just so you know. And that's all I have to say to you, for you all today. Thanks, but I do have some pictures I'd like to pass around. Come to me with a pair of some, thank you. And, um, I know that Councilman Cherry, welcome back. You have the mask already, but I let off the mask, so if you want to go to these places yourself, if you listen to the inspectors, take one for yourself. Pass it around. Appreciate it. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you all.
Mr. President, I believe there is a provision that I'm allowed to ask a question to someone after the entirety or after the example?
That's a lot? Well, a couple, a couple of questions, that would be one. Do you, do you know what the ruling is on asking someone to have a public statement? Is it after the entirety?
After, after.
After, after, okay. I'll wait till after. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Cherry Jr., reside at 1150 New Jersey Street. And I just want to thank the persons in this role and the community for the kindness and compassion that you show, Councilperson Cherry. You meant a lot, and I thank you. I thank you. Appreciate that. Also, uh, Mrs. Cherry's picture was in the paper. It's a nice-looking picture, too. I over it, there was like implication because of her absence that council couldn't conduct their meetings due to the rules of order. That's not necessarily true. So I made me realize that we have to work together in a cohesive manner to get things done in our community for the betterment of all. So I thank you, and blessings.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. My name is Julie Jack Meadies. I live at 1469 Fernwood Boulevard in Orleans. I think Councilman Bagara hit it on the head in his questions of the mayor about enforcement because, council, you can pass whatever legislation, whatever policy, however many fines and fees you want. If the regis, if the enforcement falls off on that, nothing changes. The woman that Jorge spoke of is now a client of my office because we're going to file a lawsuit against that landlord. Notably, that landlord is none of these individuals here. It's an out-of-town person. They own over 280 properties across our county, and many of them are in that same condition. I have the pictures and the text messages where she tried to ask her landlord to address the problems, including raw sewage leaking in the basement and going off through this house, mold in the attic, open windows and a collapsing balcony. They ignored her. It wasn't until she finally called the fire department because she was concerned about this smell of sewage, and the fire department came out. And according to the fire code, they called the health department, they called the building department, and they got some action to happen. But this is a common area of a multi-unit property. Nobody should have to live like that. But because there are no interior inspections and because our system now is entirely reactive and not proactive, then tenants live like that all over our city. That individual Jorge spoke of lives three blocks from you, Councilwoman Kiko, and only three blocks from Councilwoman Cherry. She's almost directly between your homes. I'm sorry, King, I apologize. I looked up your address, you're far more than three blocks, Mrs. Cherry. I, I say this lightly, but it's not just about interior inspections either, because I have 11 other clients that live on Overlook Drive in Ward Four, Mr. Edwards' ward. There's a property that has been vacant for 10 years on overlook. 10 years. After numerous complaints from multiple residents to the building code enforcement departments, finally, last year, there was a misdemeanor of the fourth degree code violation filed by the law director's office, but the individual didn't appear for court, and the judge declined to issue a bench warrant, which I don't frankly blame Judge Zumbar for. But there's no enforcement, not for exterior, not for interior, not for the laws that are on the books, not for the legislation that you're considering now. None of this matters if there's no enforcement. We have code on the books, we have zoning laws that are supposed to protect all of our neighbors and all of our neighborhoods, but it's not being enforced. So why should all of these individuals that live in our city have to hire a private attorney to do what the city should be doing for them? None of them should. And it's been suggested that I'm up here for political reasons or to line my pockets and make money. I'm losing money on this, guys, I promise you. I'm here because I care. I want to be a resource to any one of you. And to Mr. Bagara's point again, find out what that gap is. I've got a public records request that I've already drafted to find out what that gap is, and I think I know what it's going to tell me. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and pass my vote. She's going to pass.
Wesley Schultz, 641 South Henley. I had a bunch of stuff written, but after hearing all this, I'm going to change some things, so I might be off the beaten path. Mr. Mayor, that house you were speaking of on Overpress, Overlook, wherever, in the $300,000, $400,000 neighborhood, was that a landlord property? Or was that owner occupied?
Mr. Mayor?
The $300,000 to $400,000 property you mentioned that had windows broken out, animals in it, everyone's been complaining for 10 years. Was that a homeowner occupied or a home? It doesn't matter which property. Was it a landlord that owns the property? It doesn't matter which street it is. But anyway, I'm going to scrap everything, and I guess since something needs to change for the city to save face for the last year of headaches, I think we can all agree this ordinance 1525 has to end somewhere. Let's just step up. Council members, let's vote to suspend the rules for 1525. Let's vote to pass this thing so we can all move, move on with better objectives to move the city forward. Let's vote this thing tonight. Thank you.
Ben Bolong, 1005 Vincent Boulevard, right here in Alliance. I have no formal report tonight, guys. No formal report. But I do have one question. Mr. Mayor, since you have 360 inspections that you know that you were given, can I stop by tomorrow and pick those up? I'll pay for them, I'll pay for the copies. Will they be ready tomorrow? That's, that's it. That was it.
Moving on. Excuse me, sir. I have a question. I'd like to ask one of the questions. Uh, regards to, uh, Mr. Mendoza, what is the address of the Cambridge Haynes address?
We've asked, uh, if you look it up on Google Maps, it's 205, 89, it's multiple, uh, 205 or 209.
209, okay. Do you know if there was a formal request for inspection done with the city administration for that property?
I believe, um, I believe I would refer to, uh, this.
There was not.
There was not, okay.
And after she called the fire department, we called the health department, they made it while it tried to.
All right, thank you. And then, um, if we are able to pass Ordinance 1525, Section 771 dot O5 Inspection and Fee, the City of Alliance may further inspect the exterior and interior of a condition C, D, or F. Just, uh, information. All right, but move on. All right, uh, moving on. Good readings, not second readings.
Ordinance 1625 introduced by Lones. Sorry. An ordinance amending Section 117.02 of the codified ordinances of the City of Alliance to update and establish engineering and planning fees and declaring an emergency.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings for 1625.
Then move to suspend. Second by Mr. Edwards. Call the roll, please.
Bagara?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Kiko?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 1625.
Then move to adopt. Thank you, Ms. Kiko. Question, questions? Call the roll, please.
Bagara?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Kiko?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lones?
Yes.
Ordinance 1725 introduced by King. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, ODNR, for $180,000 for the purpose of making improvements to the Alliance park system and to enter into a contract with ODNR as required and declaring an emergency.
Ms. King?
I make a motion to suspend the three readings for Ordinance 17 dash 25.
Then move to suspend. Second by Ms. Cherry. Call the roll.
Bagara?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Kiko?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
I make a motion to adopt Ordinance 17 dash 25.
Move to adopt. Second. Ms. Cherry, now, questions, discussion?
Bagara?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Kiko?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lones? Yes. Ordinance 1825 introduced by Lones. An ordinance appropriating funds and authorizing and directing the Director of Public Safety and Service to enter into contracts at the lowest and best price for the purpose of purchasing materials and equipment for Silver Park Ice Skating Rink and Maple Beach Splash Pad projects through the cooperative purchasing program by advertising for bids or soliciting quotes at a total not to exceed $180,000 in any case and declaring an emergency.
Dr. Lones?
Uh, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to suspend Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings for 1825.
Then move to suspend, second by Ms. Cherry, call the roll.
Bagarra?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Kiko?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lonest?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 1825.
Then move to adopt, second by Ms. Cherry, discussion, hard question.
Yeah, I have a discussion, once again, this is a reimbursement of $180,000, it's not an expense to the city, once we pay the $180,000, we'll receive the reimbursement grant, just want to clarify that.
Other questions or comments regarding that motion? Call the roll please.
Bagarra?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Kiko?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lonest?
Yes.
Ordinance 1925 introduced by King, an ordinance author, an ordinance designating the Greater Alliance Development Corporation as a program administrator for the revolving loan fund as provided by ordinance 85 S10, uh, 10 S, sorry.
Ms. King?
I make a motion to suspend the three readings for ordinance 19-25.
Then move to suspend the three readings, second by Ms. Cherry, turn it.
Bagarra?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Kiko?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lonest?
Yes.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 1925.
Then move to adopt, second by Ms. Cherry, question, discussion. Then move to discuss. Ms. King, Ms. Turney?
Bagarra?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Kiko?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lonest?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025 introduced by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the appointing authorities of the city to provide a poised credit for prior service up to six years for placement on vacation and wages scheduled for the bargaining units referenced within.
Then move to later. Ms. King?
I make a motion to suspend three readings for ordinance 20-25.
Move to suspend, second. Mr. Edwards, call the roll.
Bagarra?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Kiko?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lonest?
Yes.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 20-25.
Then move to adopt, second by Ms. Edwards, question for further discussion.
Can I ask a question, sir?
Yes.
The appointing authorities, okay, who are we talking?
You're speaking about the mayor, but you also have law director, honor their clerk courts, judge, park board, and health board who are appointing authorities.
They all are appointed to?
They all have the ability to appoint or hire, that term for appointing is referring to the hiring of unemployed.
Okay, man, I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Then move to discussion. Call the roll.
Bagarra?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Kiko?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lonest?
Yes.
Ordinance 2125 introduced by Bagarra, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Public Safety and Service to enter into an agreement to participate in the Ohio Department of Transportation's contract for purchase of sodium chloride and declaring an emergency.
Uh, move to suspend the rules requiring three readings for ordinance 2125.
Then move to suspend, second by Ms. Kiko, call the roll.
Bagarra?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Kiko?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lonest?
Yes. Uh, move to adopt ordinance 2125.
Then move to adopt, talking about Ms. Kiko, question? Then move to call the roll.
Bagarra?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Kiko?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lonest?
Yes.
All right, no new business, old business.
Ordinance 1525 introduced by Lonest Mastriani, an ordinance amending Alliance codified ordinance section 771 and sec to improve residential housing facilities.
Thank you, Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt ordinance 1525.
Then move to adopt.
What about?
Get it on the table first.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Second. Okay, then move to second. Go ahead.
I move.
Oh, wait, no, we have to put it on the table. No, we can't, we have to move that after, that will prove it. Go ahead, we want to make an amendment, now's the time to do it.
Before it's voted on, right? That's what I thought. I just, I want to make a motion to add the amendments that I presented to everyone two weeks ago, I believe, thought more than that, to ordinance 15-25. Do I have to do, should I read it? Okay, on page 4, 771-05A, says Alliance may further, I said Alliance shall further, and then under 1 and 2, I say all non-owner and all residents. Under B, $70 for their first unit plus 15 for all units in addition to thereof, that was with the multi-unit rentals, and then I added D, the safety, the city service safety director shall establish a tenant hotline with a phone number and email address to receive complaints regarding landlord inattention to deficiencies to request an inspection regardless of the rating condition. There will be no charge to either the tenant or the landlord for this initial inspection. If follow-up inspections are required, the landlord would be assessed the established cost. Page 6, 771-10A parentheses, it's in it board within 40 days of ordinance taking effect, and it says if owner of non, if owner of non-owner occupied premises is not registered by the 40 days, that property would be, would go to the top of their priority list for inspections regardless of the rating condition. That, that had to do with registrations, just to make it an incentive to register, and also the address, property owner, phone number, and proof of property insurance would be also included in that.
Okay, so it should move to second, did you make an amendment to the previous bill? There are questions, discussion, comments?
I have a question, what is the $70 fee for?
That's inspection fee.
That's the inspection fee?
Yeah, yeah, inspection.
Not the registration?
No, no, the inspection fee.
Thank you very much.
I was going to say that. We haven't had a second for the amendment, we're still in discussion.
Yeah.
We had a, no, no, he's just making a motion at this point.
I made a motion right now.
There's been no second on the amendments.
You're right.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on some of the amendments, huh? There's been no second on the amendments.
There has to be to make a discussion.
How can you, how can you approve before we have a discussion on amendments?
He made a motion to amend.
Okay.
A second, then we have discussion.
And then the amendment gets voted on, okay.
We're out of order right now.
That's, yeah, apologize.
He made a motion to adopt, and he seconded.
Okay.
No.
He can second.
That was for, that was for the ordinance 1525.
They done it out of order.
Is there a second to the amendment motion?
I don't even know what to do right now.
Well, now, what process would be?
Katie, so we don't get in no trouble, let's back it up. There was amendment out there, it was Jim and Ed, for the amendment, and then they opened up for discussion.
What is happening, we had a motion to approve House Bill 1525, it was seconded, then there was an amendment motion, and we need a second for that, we will discuss that, then we will vote on it, on whether you want to amend 1525, and if you amend, if you agree, be free to it, then we will vote on the amended version, oh, we have to, yeah, we can vote on the amended version.
That's true.
See how that flows now? If you turn it down, we still have to vote on the existing 1525. All right, at this point in time, let's say, is there questions or discussion on the amendment motion?
Does it second it?
Yeah, we need a second. Now, I have a second, it was I, I can second. Going once, going twice, no one wants to second that motion to amend, then the motion dies, then the motion dies, and you're back to your original motion that had been moved and seconded. Further discussion or question? I'm sorry. No further discussion, then you're ready to vote on approving motion 1525 as it was originally presented. Call the roll please.
Bagarra?
Yes.
Cherry?
No.
Edwards?
Yes.
Kiko?
Yes.
King?
No.
Lonest?
Yes.
Motion has passed. All right, moving on. Good of the order, Mr. Bagarra.
Uh, nothing to see there, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Cherry?
I just want to commend those who came up and presented themselves today, as well as Ms. Jack Meades, because over the years, we have administration, the fire department, the health department, they all have to start becoming partners to one another, so if the young lady would have called the health department, she would automatically called the fire department, and they all would have worked together to get her out of that home, because I just had two houses, two individuals with mold, and the young lady, she's an elderly lady, 87 years old, she had to be rushed to the hospital, if the fire department and EMTs wouldn't have got there within 10 minutes to break down her side door, the lady would have died, living in mold and filth and water dripping from the ceiling, so I empathize with everybody because I've been on council 14 years, yes, but I've lived through Alliance 70 years come May 18th, I have saw 50 years of blight, and yes, it's been in the first and second ward, but now the cancer has spread, and it's going to continue to spread, because we don't take the initiative for actual, just the exterior. If the exterior would have been taken care of over these 50 years, we might not have had the problems that we have in the interior now. So it has to be addressed, and we have to actually exercise the code enforcement, because I've called several times, and I got a list, when you say 385, I got a list of the ones just for 2023 and 24 that have not been answered by email, and it doesn't make sense. If you're that busy, you need to hire somebody or work double, because the work has to be done, and that's your job. So we got work to do, you know, ordinance is on paper, we got to be proactive, we got to be doers.
Mr. Edwards?
Two things, the only reason I voted for that was because it is a very small step in the direction, and I want to emphasize small. Also, I'm bothered with this discrepancy in the number of violations, and I'd heard about it before, so right now, I'm going to read a letter that I'm going to give to the law director, a request to list of rental and owner occupied parcel zoning and department violations for 2024, it should include the filing number, date of the filing, went into whom it was assigned to on your staff, and the status of the violation disposition. I also request this information to be in council's hands no later than Friday, February 16th, 2025. Respectfully, Jim Edwards, fourth ward councilman, and I have copies for the mayor, safety service director, president guards, and a council clerk.
February.
I'm sorry, May 16th.
Did you, do you not have what I already passed out?
If I do, I don't have it.
I'll make that copy.
Okay.
I have all that information.
That's it.
Yeah, we need to figure out where these, where these differences are, and figure out exactly what is going on, because there are discrepancies that are very troubling.
All right, Ms. King?
Yes, this person down the street from me, they never called me, first I heard of this, and I know this house, that's what we're here for, and I am public, I can't get any more public than I am right now, everything's online except for my social security number. I choose to rent in Alliance. When my parents died, they left me two homes, not one, they left me two homes. I didn't want to be a homeowner, I'm a single grandma raising grandkids, and it's costly to be a homeowner. I'm just still feeling some kind of way about, about, about this. And mayor, as far as you saying 1 and 2 are not as, as bad as, it might not be as bad, but I see you listed Liberty, Seneca, Linden, Arch, and Union, that's five streets in my ward. If we can only start with the cars, what happened to the ordinance with the cars without the legal tags on them?
We got, we got, we got cars sitting in people's yards, on flat tires, no windows, and like you said, rodents coming in and out, school bus, if somebody don't do something about that school bus, I'm going to catch a case.
Who has a school bus in their yard full of trash, sitting right across from Habitat from Humanities for Humanities Store? So now when you all go down our street, I want you to look over there to your right, it's a school bus full of trash. We got to start this, I bet they don't have that up in the third and fourth ward.
Enforcement.
We, we got to, we got to do something, people, we got to do something. I was raised to be proud of your property, be proud of what, you know, we set the flowers out, we, we added sidewalks, we added garage, be proud, and it starts at home whether you rent or you're buying. It's my choice, and I have, thank God, thank God, I have a wonderful landlord, wonderful landlord, and I know some of you are too, wonderful landlords, I'm not putting anybody down, but I'm just telling you how Cindy King feels, and I prefer to rent, and I'll probably rent until the day I die because it's my choice, and I have a home if I want to go to it in the country, but then I can't be this wonderful councilwoman. I'm just going to stay right here in town.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just want to congratulate Mr. Wustowski for his appointment to the health department, and then with tonight's passage of 1525, I'd like to formally request that the administration begin to enact this legislation, specifically establishing the Housing Oversight Board and beginning to do inspections.
I have a question for you, sir.
Are you done? I am, thank you.
Yeah, who's oversight board?
I'm sorry?
Who is on the oversight board?
To be appointed, it's a five-member board, I believe we can.
Mayor fix him. Mayor fix him, I like you, Andy.
The other question, again, you know, what we need to remember is, two meetings in a row, we've honored really good employees, we have a lot of good things going on here, what I like here is, we're going to continue to attack the problem, that's something I think we need to keep, and the word is attack a good medical hospital, but resolve the problem would be the better way, okay? And with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn, move by Ms. Bagarra, second by Ms. Cherry, call the roll.
Bagarra?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Kiko?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lonest?
Yes.
Mastriani?
And we are adjourned.